I'd like to call the May seventeenth, twenty twenty-one meeting of the Common Council of the City Report to order. I will be taking down my mask as I have sneeze guards on each side and I am more than two weeks out from being fully vaccinated. So with that, pledge of allegiance, Councilman Vincent.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Clerk Treasurer, Harthoon.
Councilwoman Kaneshny.
Present.
Councilwoman Ficus.
Present.
Councilwoman West.
Here.
Councilman Galloway.
Here.
Councilwoman Cutler.
Present.
Councilman Frankie.
Present.
Councilman Vincent.
Here.
All present.
Approval of minutes, do I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second discussion. Hearing none, all in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Petitions and comments of the citizens, and I'd like to begin first. Exciting announcement here, thank you to Drummond Osborne and the many Kiwanis. If you don't mind, Drum, come forward to the mic, state your name and your address, and let's talk about Fourth of July Parade.
Yeah.
Welcome.
Very glad to be here.
You can take your mask down if you'd like, up to you.
I was trying to get the branding promo. My name's Drummond Osborne, the address ten twenty-five Madison Street here in La Port, just a couple blocks away. Very excited to be here with kind of some late breaking news that Kiwanis Club has been asked and has gladly accepted the opportunity and honor to step in and sponsor and run this year's Fourth of July Parade. We've got about seven and a half weeks till go time, and I've got to tell you that this will probably be the best parade that the city's seen in a decade plus. And I say that based upon the community excitement that has already been seen out there. So some late breaking news for all of you, and I'll be brief on this. We did just finish up our marketing committee meeting. We did arrive at a theme for this year that you are hearing before any other Kiwanis, but decisions need to be made. So this year's theme is going to be Bold Stripes, Bright Stars, and Brave Hearts. We thought that encompassed the love of America, the hopefulness of some bright stars, and the brave hearts which covers everybody over these last twelve to eighteen months and everything that they've been doing. So we're very excited there. The applications are just now being sent out. They will be posted as, all information will be at the Kiwanis Club of LaPorte.org website. So later in the next couple days we'll have some information there. We are also going to look at this as an opportunity to raise some funds for a great parade and for some great community service, and with that we will be having some sponsorship opportunities with some different levels. So to that, I say stand and wait with checkbook in hand. We'll have some great things going there. And as far as what the the community and the town and the council can do for us at this point, we are looking for unique entries. We are looking for the old-fashioned floats, that many of us grew up watching go down Lincoln Way, and we're looking for musical entries. Would love to have as many bands as we could, so if you have any contacts out there, feel free to contact me. I can reach two one nine three six two eight five six seven, and all that contact information is also on the Kiwanis Club of LaPorte website. So with that, I'll conclude comments, and if there are any questions, I can answer.
Thank you, Drum. And again, Bold Stripes, Bright Stars, and Brave Hearts.
That's us.
And it was funny, because right before the meeting, I spoke to Representative Presswell, and he whispered into my ear, is there, do you think there's any limit on the amount of sponsorship check I can write? And I said, we appreciate that, Representative, in advance, and questions for Mr. Osborne.
Just thank you. Thank you very much for stepping up. It's amazing.
Thank you to the Kiwanis organization. This parade, I think, means a lot to our community and to have it this year, and in particular, I think, is a big win for our community. So thank you very much.
We are excited. We really, really are excited about this. Well, we have no other questions for you.
Amazing, and thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Great.
Sue Jesch, if you could step to the mic and state your name and address for the record.
Okay, my name is Sierra Sue Jesch, and I live on Jefferson Avenue. I want to, last time, there was suggestion about regulating vape shots in town. My comment is, you're locking the barn door after the horse has already escaped. You don't try to legislate something that people already have. If you're serious about our health and reducing the amount of smoking and such that's done in this town, and vaping and whatnot, you get together with the schools and with the hospital, you set up some places so that people can break the habit of smoking, you get into the schools, you teach the kids about not smoking, and if you do those two things and you're effective at it, the demand for vape shots will go away, and you will be able to let the economics take care of how many we have. Thank you.
Sue, thank you. And by the way, I just want to clarify, and again, being a free enterprise person all my life and owning business, these were calls that came in and were shared with me from parents of students, and so what we try to do is because we've heard so many times in different communities that government is backdoor politics, everything's going on, which if people worked a day in their life in government, they'd recognize that it isn't, and so we try to bring that to the forefront, so you hear firsthand, just like our council people do, about the different topics that we face and we're hearing from our residents.
Those parents need to get together with the schools and the hospital and whoever that can help them, and get active themselves.
Thank you, Sue.
That'll work better than trying to legislate, because if you make it harder to get, you're going to drive the cost up, which is going to hurt the people that are using the product, and when you make something a shortage, the demand goes up, just as you've seen on the East Coast with gas this last week. Thank you.
Thank you. Spencer England, if you'd state your name and address for the record.
That's okay. You mean, it has to go? I was here just to help him out with something.
So you're not speaking?
Uh, not right now.
Okay, Martin Chidalek, if you could come in, state your name and address as well.
Hi, I'm Martin Chidalek, four zero nine F Street here in La Porte, born and raised here. The other month, I petitioned the city council to have the ordinance keepers to walk the streets and sidewalks following up behind Surfrere Wireless. I didn't see anything in, let's say, the water bill flyer, or the newspaper, or heard on the news, anything about people who are having issues with broken street curbs or sidewalks. I didn't hear anything about this, and so I'm wondering what happened to my petition. And so I'm wondering what happens to stuff that gets said here, has come up. I see that Phase Two of Monroe Manor's water separation issue, sewage and stormwater and new water and everything like that is going well. I slept since I spoke with the man from the water department, so I don't know if their city is actually replacing the water valves, and I also petitioned the city to see if they could find a number of contractors who would be willing to, at a reduced rate, if the citizens requested, to replace their water mains and/or their sewage drains into the houses at a reduced rate because the streets are already torn up. I'm wondering if this, I'd like to petition the city to consider an ordinance for the Airbnbs that are happening. Michigan City and New Buffalo are having issues with their Airbnbs, and the big party situations that are going on from people who've never been to the city before and such like that, and it's creating an issue both in New Buffalo and Michigan City, and you all should already know about this stuff going on. So I'd like to petition the city to draw up some kind of an ordinance to keep LaPorte from becoming or having the issues that Michigan City and New Buffalo, just at the local ones, I'm sure thousands of other cities across the nation are having these types of issues.
Are you hearing complaints of the Airbnbs here in LaPorte?
Not yet. But it's like this young lady just said, it's like trying to catch the horse, closing the barn doors after the horse has gotten out. And so I'm asking you all to be preemptive in this.
And Mr. Chidalek, I want to remind, we do have a three limit max, so make sure that we do coordinate there.
Well, and so you told me before that this is not a question and answer.
Correct.
Situation. So where do we get our questions and answers, actually heard and answered?
Well, I'm not sure about petition, because I don't have anything formal in writing, and I don't think any of the council members do as well.
It does say petitions and comments.
Right, but I'm saying if you formally petitioned, we're having comments.
Is this not formal?
Tim Warner would be glad to sit down with you, our water superintendent, who knows as much about anybody's water. What did he say when you called him?
I have slept since then, and I forgot whether they actually replaced the valves, was one of the concerns.
When did you meet with him?
Just a week or so after.
Tim Warner?
Yeah.
At the water department?
Um, no, it was the other guy.
Jerry Jackson in wastewater?
Yes. I spoke with him.
And so are you meeting with Tim Warner regarding the water valves?
No, I'm not. I'm asking you all. You are the city council.
Well, Tim Warner, though, makes those decisions on a daily basis. He is the superintendent of water, and we'll be glad to give you his phone number and set up, because he will be able to tell you the specific plan for the water situation and the valves.
Okay. I'll get ahold of Tim.
Or you can, he will actually be on Board of Works tomorrow as well at nine a.m., and you're welcome to, we can also talk about that there.
Well, I would appreciate it if you talked about it. I'm actually employed, and so I'll be working at that hour. I won't be able to make it.
But he is available at his office, he's, his number's out there, he'll come even possibly to your house if you'd like. He does that a lot.
Okay, and I know I've ran out my three minutes, but the, I asked you all to have the ordinance keepers, I forget what they're called.
Code enforcement?
Code enforcement, thank you. I asked you all to see if you could get code enforcement to walk, not drive, behind Surfrere Wireless to see the damage that they're doing, because the individual citizens, some of them are renting and some of them aren't there, and you know, it's just, they're damaging the already difficult situation that we have.
Progress is difficult, and I understand your concern and what's happened. We have much concern, so I think about two meetings ago, we required Surfrere to hire an overseer, which is U.S. United Consulting, and they are out every day, and Maggie Dickerson, who is in charge, and I can actually give you her cell number, so you can speak to her directly, and she is taking one person, all the complaints of any damage that's happening in the city of LaPorte due to Surf Wireless.
And do the rest of the citizens of the city know about this situation?
If they don't, we'll make sure that they do, because when we take calls, that's who we connect people to.
That's what I was asking you all to do.
Just as we do, if people have complaints about RTS with the trash, anytime that they do, we connect them to anybody that can help solve their problem, because our goal is to make sure that these individuals are taken care of when they have a problem. So I'm going to give you this number right now, if I could. Her work cell is two one nine eight five one eight two two three, and that was approved at Board of Works two meetings ago, I believe.
I can get that, exactly.
So they have total oversight over Surf Air.
Okay.
And then my cell is three six three seven two nine three. If you have any questions you want to follow up, and welcome to call this evening or tomorrow if you want to work. And then I'll let Tim Warner know that you'll be contacting him to set up a meeting about the water valves.
Just wondering if they're, and possibly having a contractor to, I mean, it would have gone out with the water bill, where you guys all have a flyer that goes out with the water bill, and it has a lot of information in it, and everybody who's in the city who gets a water bill gets one of these. And so that would give them the opportunity, if there were contractors, several contractors, offering to replace your mains in and out of your homes while the streets dug up at a reduced rate.
Perfect.
And I brought this up a few months back.
Thank you. Any other comments with Mr. Chidalek? Thank you.
All right. I don't mean to be a pain, and I'm not a real good public speaker. I get all.
Hey, I'll tell you what, we appreciate the interaction. We try to be on and about, but this is great. This is what these meetings are for, and we like to hear this where we can improve.
Thank you.
Thank you. Lisa Piersekowsky, new building.
I have handouts for everybody.
It'll work.
That's okay. We've got them all over anyway.
Thank you.
And I'll remind you again, is the three-minute limit, please?
I am Lisa Piersekowsky, Center Township trustee here in La Porte. I was at your meeting a couple meetings ago. I said I'd be back this month. I'm, and again, asking for $200,000 from the American Rescue Plan. I guess things, I don't know, rumors happen, and I wanted to bring this forward on what my plan is. So my plan is to buy the building on Jefferson Ave. My board members have approved it. Two of the three board members have approved it, like, you know, all boards, not everybody agrees. So this is a layout of what I'd like to do to help the residents in LaPorte, and Tom, you'll notice that we have bathrooms, showers, and laundry facility for our clients, and that's a very big need in LaPorte for our less fortunate and homeless people. So basically, the front would be entryway, office for the girls, office for myself, interview rooms, bathrooms for our clients that are coming in, resource center food pantry would be right in the middle, and then after that would be a kitchen. The kitchen would be available to my staff and also to anybody that's there during the day. Bathroom and showers for men, bathroom and showers for women, laundry facility, day room with computers and lockers, basically set up kind of like keys to hope in Michigan City. Also, an office in the back. Lindsay from the Swanson Path Program was hoping to be here with me tonight, but she was feeling ill. So hopefully, Mayor Dermody, she emailed you or text you about some of the information she wanted to say tonight. But the next page, it talks about what the difference is with the homeless shelter, transitional housing, permanent supportive housing, and housing and rent. So I won't go through that. You guys can basically read all that. The next is numbers. What we've had in 2015, and we're now in 2021, we've had thirty-six clients come in with a total of fifty-five individuals in their households. And basically, the next reports are how I took those numbers off of our Tom's Web system, showing, without the names, I had to erase the names and birthdates and all that, but shows you how we came up with all those numbers. So again, I'm asking for the $200,000 from the city and $200,000 from the county. Again, we were supposed to receive $700,000, so I'm not asking for the full amount. The building is a little over $300,000 is what he's asking for. We're in the middle of getting an appraisal done in it now, and then there would have to be quite a bit of building out in there, because we, you know, we have to do all the different rooms and stuff. But my main purpose is, you know, the bathrooms and showers and laundry service, because as we have, Tom, the individual we've been working with, you know, he needs a shower, and there's no place in LaPorte for him to take a shower. So this would give him the opportunity to come in, wash his clothes, so we can get a job for him, take a shower so he's not smelly, and, you know, also other individuals in LaPorte. So we're trying to get this building, not only for my office, but to help the residents of Center Township and the outlying areas also, so.
Questions?
Does this include any parking? This is kind of near my office. I'm familiar with the building.
Yeah, so there is, we have parking on one side, and then we would be purchasing the parking lot also, which is, we currently have some sold spots where people rent it and stuff, so.
Is it behind, where's the parking location at?
Parking's on both sides of the building.
Okay.
So, yeah, there's plenty of off-street parking.
I was just wondering about the location on Jefferson. Attorney just said it was near us.
It's the old celebrations to go, and Ben Conowitz had his escape room in there.
Oh.
I was thinking of a different building.
Oh, okay.
Across from Fifth Third Bank, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So, but like I said, plenty of off-street parking for our clients. But the main reason I want to get downtown is because I want to get down where everybody's at that's in need, and that's, a lot of that area is the problem area, and hopefully, by having this, we're able to work with people. Like Lindsay and I were talking, the more we can get the young man to come into our office every day and work with us, the more they start to trust us, the more they start to understand the different programs we have, and that's our main focus, just, you know, keep the programs. And I have employers calling, I have about eight hundred jobs sitting at my desk for people, you know, so this, you know, if they're coming in each day to get something to eat, or take a shower, or launder their clothes, we're meeting with them every day, you know, we're seeing them every day. And that way, we can continue to work with them, and the more they see us, the more they talk to us, the more they start to, you know, accept us and know that we're there to help them and not something else. So it's kind of a win-win for everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Thanks, Lisa.
Spencer England, if you'd state your name and address?
Spencer England, five sixteen E Street. The only comment I wanted to make was regarding the issue that Marty was talking about regarding the broadband going in on some of the areas. I have a shop, not really a business, but it is kind of a business down on B Street, and there are several places where they had dug up the property, left the holes, a couple of them were relatively deep, and this is right on some people's driveways. There's also been issues with dirt piles being left on top of where they put those boxes in the ground to put the broadband. So I've already, this is not like a finger-pointing thing for me, it's just, I know I've had several people from that ward talk to me about this, because I kind of initially started moving on some of the damage that was done on my property. Again, technically, your guys and our property together, because it's in the right-of-way, but busted concrete, you know, a heavy machine that, I used to run heavy equipment in the Army, so I mean, heavy equipment, some of that machinery can weigh, you know, the one they had, that pipe pusher was eight to 10,000 pounds, and they were getting ready to drive it on my new concrete I paid for last year when I went in that sidewalk program. So all I'm doing is letting you guys know that there are people in the area who have had damage, and some of them now have the information to contact Maggie and talk with her, but the process was slow to go, and I just wanted to kind of throw it out there that this wasn't like a minute project, and maybe something that may have alleviated some of the concerns where the homeowners had to deal directly with the person or the contractor, the general contractor, subcontractor. The city should have maybe addressed, I'm not saying should or shouldn't have, but in my opinion, it should have been set up in a contract prior to, so that the residents didn't intentionally have to deal with those people themselves. If they had problems, they could report it to somebody, and then you guys could take care of it, because from what I was told, that things were done on a permit basis, just like if I was going to cut a tree down, I pulled a permit. And I don't know what the permit entailed, because I tried to pull that, and I haven't got that yet. But it's just to make sure that you guys aren't, well, I'm in for progression as well, as long as we're not moving two steps back, you know, because we're busting concrete while we're putting pipe in. And so that was all. I just want to let you know there are people in the area who have like, well, who do I talk to, you know? So some of us, you know, fifty percent of the people in the city probably are doing social media, some of them aren't, and not everyone reads a newspaper. You know, a hundred people in the room, there's probably three people who've read a newspaper every week. So there should be something on the city website. I know, Roger. But I mean, just so an idea that you might want to put something out there saying, hey, if you guys are having problems, you know, check out this site, or have something on the city page, maybe in the newspaper directing people, because the old days of putting things in the newspapers kind of done away with. So that's all I'm getting, it's just so you know.
Well, good point, and we will add, talk to our communications director tomorrow. And one thing, we're holding a standard that anything that has been dug up, and Laura Kaneshny heard the same thing that I did, councilwoman, from them, is we're holding that it will look the same when they're done than when it did before, and if not, we will be addressing all of those individual items, and we're always going to be accessible and available, but it will be, we will be holding them to that standard. Thank you. Questions? Great. I'm going to move before we go to standing committee reports, because we have some wonderful teachers here, and we want to make sure that we honor them and allow them to be on their way if they'd like. So with that, I have Erin Parker, teacher here from LaPorte High School, that would like to introduce some teachers of the year and explain how and why they were able to be awarded in 2021 here.
Can you do that? I don't have to give my address, do I?
Yes.
Well, I'm Erin Parker. I teach at LaPorte High School. Thank you for having us. I'm super excited to be able to introduce two of our best teachers in our district. So this year, we started a program where, well, the state has an Indiana Teacher of the Year program, and I think you all would agree that the LaPorte teachers should be in the mix every single year for the state award. So with that, we created the program, and we had two rounds. So the very first round, somebody in the corporation could nominate a fellow coworker, which we had a really good response from that. And then, we told all the nominees, hey, you were nominated, and if you'd like to continue on, you're going to fill out the second form. And when we did that, we had a group of local leaders and retired teachers, including Councilwoman West over here, and we met and found two candidates, one for the elementary and one for secondary, who just absolutely blew us away. So if I could introduce them, and then I'll say a little bit more about them, and their principals are here too, which is super cool. But our elementary teacher of the year is Helen Crumke, and her principal is Kim Raylander. Helen, if you want to come up, right? Did she come on?
Absolutely.
Helen's at Indian Trail, and she's one of the most incredible special education teachers you could possibly ever meet, and she had just mentioned that special ed often is overlooked. And I'm telling you what, she should not be overlooked for the program that she has created and what she does every single day with her focus with students with autism. We are so lucky to have her, and Helen is a rock star, and I think Mrs. Raylander would also reiterate that. Do you want to say anything?
I'd love to hear, we'd love to hear from Helen here, and congratulations.
I just would say thank you. It's an honor to be recognized, and I truly appreciate it.
And how long have you been with the school system? How long you been with the teacher?
With LaPorte, I want to say ten years maybe, but this is like my thirty-fifth year teaching, and it's always been in special ed. It's my passion, so I've only done special ed.
Good for you.
I can't do gen ed. I'm quite frightened by gen ed.
Thank you for your service and what you've done to make our community better, and don't get too far away, because there's photo ops coming, and we have to recognize you. So thank you, though, and congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And our secondary teacher of the year, this was actually pretty cool, because she was my eighth grade social studies teacher, so it's kind of full circle here. But Bonnie DeWolfe and her principal Beth Cretz is here too. Bonnie DeWolfe teaches at the middle school, and I can vouch for the fact that she deserves this award. I think some of us, are you shaking your head too, do you have Mrs. DeWolfe? Very, very special, whether it's inside the classroom or outside the classroom, she gives 110% to everything that she does, and I know that she is one of the reasons that I became a teacher as well. So, Mrs. DeWolfe.
Bonnie, we assume your mantle, there's no room left after all the awards as a teacher, but congratulations.
Only for my husband. I make him call me your highness. I really would like to thank this opportunity, what an honor this is to come in. And, you know, when Erin was talking about this, we didn't know who nominated us. I still don't know to this day who nominated me, and it's an honor to get nominated by your fellow workers. You know, we're all so busy in our lives that sometimes we forget to look out for who else is down the hall and doing whatever else they're doing. So that was a real big honor to me. I was thrilled. And of course, when Erin came in the day that they announced it, you know, I still see her sitting in the front. it, you know, I still see her sitting in the front row of my classroom, you know, outstanding student. And to watch her grow up to be that, and I, I've enjoyed that with all my students, you know, getting to see them grow up and, and be successful in this community. In fact, today I was in the parking lot and a man came up to me and said, Mrs. DeWolfe? And I said, yes. And he goes, I was in your class, do you remember? And I'm like, you know, he had his mask on. He took his mask off. And I said, oh, yeah, I remember you. And he goes, do you remember that I cheated on the test? I said, but you learned your lesson, right? He said, yeah, I did. So, it's kind of neat to see that come back around.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Thanks.
And if you don't mind with the council, if we could have a photo op with the two winners here.
And can I just tell you that they will then be submitting their work to be up for the state award, which we have to have it submitted in July and then we'll know, I think in August or September. Hopefully they're finalists. And then hopefully we have the state teacher of the year at Laporte.
That'd be amazing.
We'd love to have their principals come up as well and include them in the photo here.
All right.
Run the center.
Run the center.
It's tall.
Yeah, I see.
All right, Erin, come on.
Oh, really, I.
Erin, please, go.
Please smile.
Erin, the mayor's direct care to get in the photo.
Well, I wanted to, so we can put those too.
Yes.
Church by the photo, so.
There's plenty.
Exactly.
Wouldn't that be cool if anyone?
Yep.
Oh, that'd be fantastic.
Semi-finalists for state.
Absolutely.
Or finalists.
That'd be exciting.
By the way, are there anybody else that would like to comment publicly? Thank you. Standing committee reports. Councilman Frankie.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I'd like to congratulate you and Attorney Otis on two fine-looking, very similar blazers.
Need to get your eyes checked, you know.
The school board met on May 10th. And those two teachers were honored for their teacher of the year awards. The summer programs were announced that will be held at the Educational Services Building, the old Boston Middle School. These programs will include breakfast and lunch, which is great. Fourth grade students are currently meeting with staff at the intermediate school through the 21st as they begin to prepare their transition from elementary school. The next school board meeting is on June 14th at the Educational Services Building at 6:00 p.m. Redevelopment Commission meets next Wednesday, the 26th, at 5:15 at City Hall. And the Diversity and Inclusion Committee meets on the 27th at 5:00 p.m. here at City Hall.
Councilwoman Ficus?
The only two things I have to report, Park Board will be meeting this Wednesday, 4:00 p.m. at the Park Office. And then Traffic Commission will be meeting June 1st, Tuesday, 6:00 p.m. at the police station.
Councilman Vincent?
Nothing there.
Councilman Galloway?
The Police Mayor Commission met the 11th on the Tuesday. And they honored Bill Danagard for his service to setting up all the lights and like the electronics on the squad cars. They said they saved them a lot of money. Ken Iliff retired and they need a replacement for him. And they got a replacement for Carl Jackson. And then May 10th was the mayor's Veterans Committee. New chairperson's Darryl Cavan. Co-chairs Rich Merzinski, secretaries Barb Cavan. June 12th, second Saturday in June, 2:00 at Soldiers Memorial Park. It's a brick dedication. They have 83 bricks. And we won't have another meeting till in August.
And we'll be, we're excited about the Veterans Day breakfast, right, in November?
Yeah, we're working on it.
We're going to, our goal is to have a free breakfast for all veterans on the morning of, at the basement of the Civic, before the packed house Veterans Day service at the Civic.
That's a cool idea.
Councilwoman Cutler?
No report at this time.
Councilwoman West?
The City of Laporte Fire Department is offering free first aid CPR classes again this year. It is also offering stop the bleed classes for teachers in schools that require it. Classes run for approximately four hours and are on first come, first served basis. The classes instructed by the department's firefighters at Fire Station One at 809 West 18th Street are approximately four hours long. And they're offered on the following days. And I won't run through them all because they go through December. But the next one will be June 17th at 4:00 p.m. So, anyone who's interested can learn more and sign up by contacting firefighter Brian Gray at brian.gray@laportefire.com. Or you can contact him at 219-362-3456.
Councilwoman Kanesny?
The Airport Authority. The Airport Authority met last Wednesday, May 12th. The first few chapters of the master plan and runway reorientation has been submitted for final review by the authority and will subsequently be sent to the FAA for approval. Fuel sales remain extremely strong. Jet fuel sales are up 32% year-over-year as charter flying has remained a popular and preferred option for many since the onset of the global pandemic. The airport has six events scheduled for the summer, which include, but are not limited to, the Arizona Commemorative Air Force B-25, youth aviation camps, pancake breakfast, dog days, lunch on the fly. And they'll also be sponsoring and having a float in the Fourth of July Parade. The next meeting is scheduled for June 9th at 5:15 via Zoom. The Historic Preservation Commission is scheduled to meet tomorrow, Tuesday, May 18th at 5:30 in council chambers. And also, the Tree Commission is scheduled to meet this Thursday, May 20th at 5:00 p.m., also in council chambers.
Thank you. Well.
Councilman Kanesny, on the airport, you talked about the runway expansion.
Correct.
That's taken it from 5,000 to 6,000 feet. Is that your understanding?
Correct.
And it would basically make it straight north-south? Is that your?
Yes.
Did they explain like the benefit of having that? Like why we would expand it?
So, to allow for additional fleet to come and actually have home base here in Laporte. So, growth is definitely one strategy. And then also too, to have more influx coming in, not only for the fuel sales, but for expansion to the community.
Got it.
So, we're honored here to have our local state representative, Jim Pressel here to give us a review of what's been happening in this past year's session, what happened, and the opportunity for all the dollars that we've seen. And I will say this, and Jim is a friend of mine, so understand that first. But he has done an amazing job. He is the chairman of transportation, which is a major chairmanship for the state of Indiana, right below public policy. And, you know, we're fortunate to have Jim on issues. And he represented us well, specifically to the city and on some bills that you hear. So, thank you for what you did this past year. And it's good to have you here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I need to set the record straight. You know, that, that conversation we were having earlier about sponsorships, I thought that went something like, whatever I was willing to sponsor, you would double?
I love my checkbook at home.
So, the mayor did ask me to be brief. So, after four months of being in Indianapolis, Monday through Thursday, getting through session, and it was a crazy session like we've never seen before with all the COVID provisions. We were not in the typical assembly. We were all at different tables. And it was chaos for the first couple of weeks, I would say. And then we kind of got into a groove and got our job done. This is the first time that the General Assembly has not adjourned, sign, eat, die. So, we are actually in recess as we speak, which is kind of very unusual. And the reason for the recess is the census, the federal census numbers to create new districts are not going to be available to the General Assembly until sometime mid-September is what we're being told, early October. So, we'll go back in October to do the redistricting maps. So, out of 1,100 bills that were filed this year, 220 of those bills were actually turned into law. A couple of them that locally generated here was one that I carried for the mayor and all of you is the UEA bill. I think it's 1025 was the number on that. So, what that did was it took the urban enterprise zone and it put it back in local control. So, it takes the state incentives away. And now you all have the opportunity to continue that. And every five years, determine whether you want to continue that or not. So, it puts it all back to local control. Another one of the interesting bills that I carried this year, you probably heard something about, was the sudden cardiac arrest bill. Interesting bill to carry. It had some struggles throughout the session, but we did get that job done. Would like to go a little bit farther, maybe next year. We'll see what happens. The MVH fund bill that was started in the Senate, made it out of the Senate. And I know that's of particular interest to everyone in this room. But it did not get a hearing in the House. So, I'm assuming that that will be back in the short session. The biggest bill we passed was the balanced budget bill. So, Indiana carries a AAA bond rating. We're one of 13 states that maintains a AAA bond rating. And it's a balanced budget, truly fiscally balanced. Some of the big items that were in that, out of the 263 pages, I picked four or five that may interest you. The, the budget includes 500 million in funds for regional economic acceleration and development initiative. And we call that ready. Those are similar to what the state did for regional cities. This gives you an opportunity to partner with the county. Gives you the opportunity to, the county to partner with another county. 500 million dollars available in grants for that. That's huge for us. 10 million dollars in grants for law enforcement body cameras. I think that's another good grant. 250 million dollars in rural broadband grants. 160 million in water infrastructure grants. And for me as chairman of roads, to see a 900 million dollar infrastructure line item budget was pretty sweet. So, we will continue to keep the state flower of Indiana, the little orange barrels out there. And continue to create great infrastructure. Another big one was the K through 12 education increase. Almost 9.1%, an additional 1.9 billion dollars goes into K through 12. An additional 600 million is supposed to go directly to teacher compensation. So, that's one of the governor's agenda items. And we hit the full 600 million on that. Summer study's going to start here in late July. And I'm going to be talking about MVH funds. We're also going to be talking about lane mile versus, lane mile versus centerline miles. And what's a more fair proportion? So, some of the conversation that I heard this year in roads was specific to the community crossings grants. We want to make sure that community crossing stays intact. Some of the larger cities are struggling with the idea that they put in a lot more than they can qualify for. So, anybody in the state qualifies for a million dollars. But some of the larger cities like Indianapolis in particular contributes almost 21 million dollars in tax revenue. And they're only allowed to get a million back. So, without harming anyone, we want to make sure we can more fairly distribute that or add to that. Thank you for the opportunity to give a quick update. The mayor said to be brief, so I won't read through all the rest of this that I put together. But I'd be glad to take questions on any of these or any bills that I didn't discuss, if you have any questions, or something that you think I'd be working on for next year.
And by the way, to be successful, you always need an equal partner that supports you. Can we do a quick intro in the back there? Who else is with you?
Becky Pressel. Becky Pressel. It's pretty rare that she comes with me to some of these. And she says, oh, well, yeah. If you're going to talk to the city council, I want to do that. So, you'll have to invite me back so I can bring Becky out again.
I would ask, before the council starts, on your MVH, it's nice to see summer study starting in summer for a change.
Well, now that I'm a co-chair, I have a little saying in that. So, this year I'll co-chair that. The Senate chairs it.
One thing to keep in mind as you look at MVH funding is possibly even the center miles versus the lane miles and so forth is also freeze-saw stability and what we have to go through with snow, spring, summer, and maybe some consideration for what we do here as they bring up points to talk about. Please keep that in mind.
Pothole per mile.
Pothole per mile. Other questions?
I had a comment about the AAA bond rating because that helps with financing. I don't know for cities, but I know for schools because the schools are backed by the state, which helps their interest rates significantly be lower.
So, it does. It helps for anybody that's going to do a bond through IFA. And typically, any unit of government is going to do a bond through the IFA. So, that gets us reduced rates because of that AAA bond rating.
You're basically a cosigner to any bond that the city, the city issues.
Absolutely. So, all those bonds do go through IFA. But like I said, to get that reduced rate is, is just absolutely huge.
That's why you all are probably annoyed sometimes when we have to do all these hearings and whatnot. But it's because the, the state makes us do that, so.
And for good reason. So, you can get a good rate.
Right.
Other questions?
I don't have a question, but I just wanted to thank you, Representative Pressel, for taking the sudden cardiac arrest bill on. It definitely needs a lot more work. I'm not going away. It's near and dear to my heart. So, I really appreciate all the hard work you put in, you know, trying to make those amendments. So, thank you.
It was an absolute pleasure. And what a great opportunity for me to learn more myself personally on sudden cardiac arrest. I had no idea that it was the number one killer of student athletes. And for us to be able to expand it, not only to just student athletes, but to the marching bands, any strenuous activity, intramural sports now are included in this. It was a definite struggle. I know you had your doubts for a while, but we got, we got it done.
Yeah. Thank you.
Other questions?
So, one of the things I'd like to pitch would be non-contiguous annexation for the city. And see if the council at some point maybe wants to have a conversation about that either offline. I've done some work with non-contiguous annexation that is friendly annexation. And I think that's a great tool to have in your toolbox, if that's a piece of legislation that y'all would like to see.
It's amazing that you bring that up. Did you hear that, Amanda? Non-contiguous annexation?
Friendly.
Friendly annexation. And again, we've had different varieties of what people think we're trying to do. But as we've said clearly several times, we're only looking annexation consideration that is undeveloped property. Because with the property tax caps, there is no value in annexing current developed property because we just lose more. And the things we talk about, whether it's 39 North and providing water sewer to non-residents, you know, we need to focus on our residents and the people that are in our community. So, we'd love to have that conversation.
I'm all in.
I think one way of considering that, we provide a lot of utilities outside the, the city limits. And if it's touched by our utilities, that might be one way to think about doing it.
Well, I'm definitely open to the conversation. I did a small piece for Valpo two years ago that seems to have worked out extremely well. And they want to come back to the table and maybe make it something that would go statewide. And it's, it's a touchy subject in Indianapolis, as Tom well knows. But I think it's something that's worth looking into.
I know a little more difficult, but the IURC's control of providing water and sewer to potential non-residents and capping what we can do at a local level, percentage-wise versus, you know, if, if there are two parties that are agreeing to a higher rate or a different rate, allowing the IURC to step aside and allow us to negotiate that between the two of us.
So, I did a lot of work this year on some expansion, sewer and water expansion into areas that were underserved or not served at all. And it was specifically targeted at investor-owned utilities. And I think that's something that, you know, the city should take a look at that. And how can you expand into it? So, for investor-owned, it allows... and I think that's a great tool to have in your toolbox, if that's a piece of legislation that y'all would like to see.
It's amazing that you bring that up. Did you hear that, Amanda? Non-contiguous annexation.
Friendly.
Friendly annexation. And again, we've had different varieties of what people think we're trying to do, but as we've said clearly several times, we're only looking annexation consideration that is undeveloped property, because with the property tax caps, there is no value in annexing current developed property, because we just lose more. And the things we talk about, whether it's 39 North and providing water sewer to non-residents, you know, we need to focus on our residents and the people that are in our community. So we'd love to have that conversation.
I'm all in.
I think one way of considering that, we provide a lot of utilities outside the city limits, and if it's touched by our utilities, that might be one way to think about doing it.
Well, I'm definitely open to the conversation. I did a small piece for Valpo two years ago that seems to have worked out extremely well, and they want to come back to the table and maybe make it something that would go statewide. And it's, it's a touchy subject in Indianapolis, as Tom well knows. But I think it's something that's worth looking into.
I know a little more difficult, but the IURC's control, providing water and sewer to potential non-residents and capping what we can do at a local level percentage-wise versus, you know, if, if there are two parties that are agreeing to a higher rate or a different rate, allowing the IURC to step aside and allow us to negotiate that between the two of us.
So I did a lot of work this year on some expansion, sewer and water expansion into areas that were underserved or not served at all. And it was specifically targeted at investor-owned utilities. And I think that's something that, you know, the city should take a look at that, and how can you expand into it? So for investor-owned, it allows them, instead of having to get a cost recovery back, I think in seven years, it let them go out to 20 years. Another feature that we continue to work on, and I can't seem to get it 100% across the finish line, is that, that final connection. So it's, it's one thing if an investor-owned or municipal utility expands into those areas that are underserved or not served, but that connection for my constituents or our constituents is pretty expensive. Even if you run the line out there past them, sometimes it's four, five, $10,000. So how do, how do we incorporate that into it is what I've been trying to work on so that we can get those sewer and water products out there.
Thank you. Any last questions? Thank you.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
No. So we will move to executive order 1-2021. As Representative Pressle was a part of, over the last two weeks, the legislature overruled the governor's veto regarding health departments and local control or approving elected officials to vote on certain directives or ordinances from health officers. And so what that did when the legislature, two weeks ago, overruled the governor's veto, it eliminated every local mask mandate in the state of Indiana immediately.
Issued by a health department.
Issued by the health department, correct. And so with that, it left all local entities to decide for themselves what is best. And because I'm vaccinated and more than two weeks out, I was very comfortable with, it's up to me if somebody doesn't want to be vaccinated and put themselves at risk, great. So I reached out to the city council members and department heads. As we talked about, we're going to open up June 1st. What should our requirement be? Because each business, each entity can decide for themselves what's best. And while I thought that the best was to leave it to individuals to decide when they walk in this building, I don't want to say a mutiny took place, as he puts his head down, Mr. Cook, between department heads and also the support, overwhelming support of the majority of this council to say, when someone walks in this building, because we don't know who's been vaccinated and who is not, that as of June 4th, well, as of actually last week when this happened, through when we opened June 1st until the last day in June, that people should still be required to wear masks when they come in City Hall. So all of you that have supported and our department heads, we talk a lot about family first, and so you pick your battles, and this was one that clearly we have to protect our department, our employees, our city council, so when the public comes in. And they're concerned. We had residents say, how do we know employees are vaccinated or not, and I want to wear my mask? So basically, what this measure, this executive order will do, per the majority of your requests, per department heads and that I support, is basically continue inside City Hall the requirement to wear masks when you're in City Hall. There is no mask mandate. I want to remind, remind everybody, there is no mask mandate in the city of LaPorte. Amanda, just so we're clear, there, there is no mask mandate in the city of LaPorte. But if you do come here, you will be required to wear a mask. And that's what this executive order does. So with that, do we want to take discussion on that or move to the resolution?
I'd move to the resolution.
So with that, we will move to this resolution of this executive order. Councilwoman Kaneshny.
Your honor, I move to read a resolution for the first and only time in its entirety.
Second.
I have a motion and a second discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Councilwoman Kaneshny.
Resolution of the common council of LaPorte, Indiana, adopting the mayor's executive order 1-2021. Whereas, the mayor issued executive order 1-2021 titled Executive Order Regarding COVID-19 Prevention Measures in the City of LaPorte Facilities. And whereas, the council finds that a public health threat exists warranting the issuance of the mayor's executive order 1-2021. Whereas, the council adopts Executive Order 1-2021 through July 1st, 2021. And now, therefore, be it resolved by the common council of the city of LaPorte that, number one, the council finds that a public health threat exists warranting the issuance of the mayor's executive order 1-2021. And number two, the council adopts Executive Order 1-2021 through July 1st, 2021. End of resolution.
Discussion.
Mayor, I'll just comment, as, as the mayor, he has executive authority over the, the facilities of the city of LaPorte to issue the executive order. But since this is your meeting, as the council leave its appropriate, that you decide how you want those meetings to be ran. So the discussion, I think, with some of the council members and then with the mayor was that you need to set the rules for your own meeting.
And I think the public would appreciate your stance and hear that you're very comfortable with this moving forward.
I just think that more people need to get vaccinated before the masks come down, and I really wish they would.
Personally, I think the city's greatest asset isn't the lake, aren't the trails. It's the people, the, the people that come into City Hall and every other department five to seven days a week. So for the, the short amount of pain, I guess, if you will, for lack of better words, to protect them and to protect the city, I'm, I'm in support of this, at least through July 1st, 2021.
Well said, Laura.
Yeah, it's better, it's better to have it open, wear a mask than be closed like we have been.
So we will be open June 1st? Is there anybody from the public that would like to speak regarding this resolution? Anybody? Okay. Ms. Pierceakowski, again, state your name and address for the record.
Lisa Pierceakowski, 1700 Lincoln Way Place, Suite 6. In my office, we're still wearing masks. Actually, the Cool Spring Township trustee just passed away on Mother's Day, and it was due to COVID. And now her entire family is, is dealing with it. So right now, I'm, I'm dealing with two offices, and I'm requiring masks in both offices. So we're not, we're not, we're not out of this yet, and the variant is still very strong. The hospitals are, you know, ventilators and everything else, so it's, it's still out there. So my office is requiring masks. So I think it's a great, I appreciate you guys doing it, because I, I agree. I think until we get more people vaccinated, we need to mask.
Thank you.
Clerk Treasurer Parthoon.
We would still invite the public to utilize our new drive-through system, as well as invoice cloud backslash, invoice.com backslash LaPorte IN. You can have all of your payment processing needs done through our new payment platform. We're very excited about it.
I just used it last week, and it's very smooth. It's easy.
Thank you.
Congratulations. It's wonderful.
And I would like to say Clerk Treasurer Parthoon has upgraded the system to pay your bills. You can pay them from your living room. You can drive through. There's, people should not have to wait in long lines here to pay a bill. I know it's the belief of government has to move slow, but what Ms. Parthoon and her team has done has been amazing. It competes with private business, that the way you've upgraded our technology. And the people of this community should be happy that the ease of doing all this work can be done from their home. Mr. Chudalik, we haven't made an official resolution, so please state your name and address.
Martin Chudalik, 409 F Street. I know that in the past, paying a water bill online, there was a fee, if you were paying it online or by credit card or something like that. Is this going to continue, and is this going to carry on to the other bills, where there's going to be an extra fee when one is paying, not in person or bringing a check here and dropping it in the box?
So with, with credit cards, there are fees that are involved. If you do pay with a credit or debit card, there, there will be a, a flat fee of $3.95 per $150 transaction. If you sign up for auto debit, it's completely free. So auto debit and one-time payments using ACH or EFT is completely free for residents. And we, we had that before, and we will continue that.
Thank you. Other comments? Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, state by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes 7-0. Other business? I know we've got a couple of things. Attorney Otis?
Representative Pressle was a part of this, but prior to COVID, the council could only vote in person. And then when COVID happened, as you know, we had, the state suspended the rules, and you could participate via Zoom, and many of you took advantage of that from some very sunny locales, if I recall correctly. But the state recently kind of expanded that, and even after the emergency is over from the governor, which is the end of this month, you can still have a, you can pass a resolution, and this is where I'm asking for some guidance, that allows you to participate remotely and vote. But I need some guidance if that is something that you all want to do, and I can get some language for you for the next meeting. It's, we got shaking heads. So in order to vote, you do have to appear like by Zoom or by video so that they can physically see you voting. It can't be telephonically, but I, I see everybody kind of supporting this. So I will get some, all of the city attorneys are talking about this, so I'll get some language for you all.
I think I read that there's a limit of two virtual meetings. Is that accurate?
I think you're correct. Yeah, we'll, we'll have, it'll follow exactly as, and then the additional thing, and we've been, Ms. Parthoon and I have been working on this. If you appear remotely, we have to do a roll call vote to, as, just some additional procedural things. The minutes have to show that you appeared remotely, that, that type of thing. But it sounds like everybody's generally supportive of that, so I'll, I'll get some language out to all of you.
Thank you. Thank you.
And I'll just say that it's a slippery slope. You know, the, just coming from the legislative side, where they used to allow people to vote from South Bend, vote from everywhere, and certain shenanigans were taking place. You know, legislature addressed that with in-person voting. So I think it has to be specific and careful, because we're representing the people of the community, and in-person, again, as we've seen statewide, is, I think, what the people expect to be represented. This is brought unique times, but I just would be cautious how we, and what we require.
Well, I think that we've seen a good thing out of this. We now have a very good social media presence through, Dune Land Media has helped us with, with, you know, Facebook and YouTube, and apparently there's people that actually enjoy sitting at home watching these things.
No, I think we need to continue that part, but the council and anybody voting members in person as much as possible, so.
And that's why I like the, the two-meeting max to do virtual, because I agree. I mean, it, it still should be an in-person thing, but situations happen, and it's nice to have a backup where you can attend.
I'll make sure to get some language out well before the next meeting then.
Also. So the CDC or whoever had announced that Pfizer is available now to 12 to 18-year-olds for vaccinations. We've heard somewhat of a struggle that there weren't enough Pfizers out there and available. Parents were trying to get their children scheduled. So we made some contacts with Walgreens and corporate Walgreens, actually Friday, after really hearing things. And so this coming Thursday, we're going to be partnering with Walgreens to come to the Civic from 3:00 to 7:00 p.m. We already have Domino's and Home Run Dogs that will be out there feeding kids that have been vaccinated. Trying to get some music. Trying to make it a fun event. Hopefully, kids will not have to pre-register with their parents. They'll have to have approval, and their kids will come out. But you'll probably see something finalized tomorrow morning about this event. I apologize about the short turnaround, but it's due to Walgreens. Our goal is to have 100, 150 vaccinations available for kids 12 to 18. Right now, the county of LaPorte is outperforming the state of Indiana, barely, but we're outperforming in vaccinations. And we should have the opportunity to focus on those 12 to 18-year-olds and make it easy for them to come. And what we're doing, because there is a wedding at the Civic happening Friday, it will be, the gym portion of it will not be accessible, but we're going to use the hallway to vaccinate and sign up. And then outdoors will be the events, the fun, the music, hopefully music, and food. So I welcome you to come out, stop by, encourage, promote, anybody that would like to receive the vaccine and families that would like their kids to receive the vaccination, to come out 3:00 to 7:00 this Thursday. And then there's been a second follow-up date in June to do that. So we appreciate Walgreens and really the county, Walgreens, Health Link, the work that they're doing. Health Link right now is working with manufacturers. They were at Homet Friday to be on-site to provide employees with Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccinations. And as I've said before, we'll go to neighborhoods if we have to and make it as easy on possible to, or easy as possible for people to be vaccinated that want to be. We've just found some people don't want to have to take the time to sign up. They don't want to go on the computer, right, wrong, or indifferent. All we care about is making sure our community has access to those vaccinations. And if you have ideas, please don't hesitate to share. But we should have something, we're calling it our shot slicers to get the kids Thursday as a part of Operation Vaccinate LaPorte. So please, anywhere that you can pass the word, we want to get as many people vaccinated, get back to normal, and eventually, with your support, of course, eliminate these masks whenever possible, so. With that.
Question?
Well, Mr. Chudalik, we're not taking public comment right now, but I'll be glad to talk to you afterwards.
I have a question. So, so this event at the Civic, is it strictly for 12 to 17-year-olds?
And family members that would like to come with, if they would like to be vaccinated as well.
Good to know. Thank you.
We will not turn away anybody, but the focus being pizza and.
Pizza.
Pizza and hot dogs. The Healthcare Foundation is always a great partner. They're going to be bringing bracelets, water, and so forth, so.
Will there be a dunk tank for you?
There won't be a dunk tank, but I started thinking about, you know, pie in the face for superintendent of schools or, you know, maybe do something of that nature. And when Mr. Frankie told me about that idea, about the pies in the face, I thought that was a great one. And with your approval, I would ask Mr. Chudalik if he has a question or a statement.
Sure.
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 Brief question. Please come to the mic, though, and state your name and address for the record.
Martin Chudalik, 409 F Street. Did I hear you say that hopefully the children won't have to have their parents' permission to come and have these shots?
I did not say that. They will have to have their permission.
Thank you.
Yes. So any other comments or other business before this board?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
We are adjourned. Thank you very much, and have a great night.
Thank you for my spot, guys.